All right, good morning, everybody. Sorry about the technical difficulties with our... No, it was not Mason Web. It was purely us. So I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. And Loretta, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Loretta. All right, let's move on to roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Megelman.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I am here. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
We do. We received notice of cannabis license application for Deep Grow Inc. and Supreme Nature LLC. We received letter from Playard Gustavus at Williams regarding an anti-corrosion survey. Received letter from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding responses to BOC recommendations 2.1 through 2.4 due by October 22, 2025, Cushman Number One Development to the Cushman Project. Received Planning Advisory Commission application from Cynthia Sand. Board of Euphorization application from Todd Wilmansky. And Health and Authority of Mason County application from Mesira Ellis. Received notice from Comcast regarding drop of root sports. Received renewal notice from Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board. Received letter from PUD3 regarding county CWPP.
All right, great, thank you. And now we have a Historic Preservation Commission open position news release.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Luke Fiskusi. I am staff for the Historic Preservation Commission. I'll just be reading a news release this morning. The Mason County Commissioners are seeking applicants to fill four open positions on the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The major responsibility of the Historic Preservation Commission is to identify and actively encourage the conservation of Mason County's historic resources by initiating and maintaining a register of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to registered properties. They also work to raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources and serve as Mason County's primary resource in matters of history, historic planning, and preservation. Responsibilities of the Commission also include administering the Heritage Grant Program and the Historic Plaque Program. Commission members serve three-year terms and meet on the second Thursday each month at 2:00 p.m. at the county offices in Shelton and via Zoom. There are currently three open positions and one position which will expire in November 2025. Applicants must be residents of Mason County. Interested persons are encouraged to apply for this Commission by completing an advisory board form on our website, which is cognitoforens.com/masoncounty2/ advisoryboardapplication or by calling the Commissioner's office at (360) 427-9670, extension 419. Positions are open until filled. All interested applicants should contact Luke Fiskusi, Staff of the Historic Preservation Commission, prior to applying at (360) 427-9670, extension 282, or by email at hpc@masoncountywa.gov. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so now we have another news release regarding the Planning Advisory Commission. To read it on my phone, so we'll see how this goes.
Mason County is seeking applications for the Mason County Planning Advisory Commission. There are three open seats. One represented as Commissioner District Number One and two represented as Commissioner District Three. The Planning Advisory Commission is a seven-member citizen board appointed to advise the Board of County Commissioners on policies related to amendments to the comprehensive plan, shoreline master program, resource ordinance, and other development regulations, including making recommendations on rezone applications. Commission typically meets at least once per month on the third Monday at 6:00 p.m. here in this room, with special meetings scheduled as necessary. Appointed Commissioners normally serve a four-year term. Commissioner District One position will be filling a vacancy set to expire in January of 2028. The Commissioner District Three positions expire in 2028 and 2029. Applications to serve on the board are being accepted until the positions are filled and should be submitted to the Mason County Commissioners here in Shelton. And applications may be obtained from the Commissioner's office by calling extension 419 or visiting our website at masoncountywa.gov.
Great, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our solid waste rate increase news release. Sweet.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to read a news release for the solid waste increase for 2026. Effective January 1st, 2026, disposal rates at all Mason County transfer and drop box stations will increase by 2.8% in accordance with Resolution Number 2022-27. This annual adjustment is based on the August Consumer Price Index for the Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue area as specified in the resolution adopted in 2022. The increase helps cover the rising cost of operating the Shelton Hood Sport Union and Belfair Solid Waste Facilities. For questions or more information, please contact Mason County Public Works Utilities and Waste Management Division at (360) 427-9670, extension 207.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you, guys. You guys enjoy your...
Mic drop moment.
All right, great. And so now we have a request for proposal for a single adult shelter news release.
Good morning, commissioners. I have a request for proposals. Mason County Public Health and Human Services is seeking proposals for the operation of a night-by-night seasonal cold-weather shelter to serve homeless individuals 18 years and older, beginning approximately December 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2026. The RFP application materials can be found on the Mason County website under Request for Proposals or Bid Opportunities. The first review of applications will take place on October 28th, 2025. The application will remain open until filled, but no later than December 1st, 2025. For more information, please contact Public Health and Human Services, Community Health at (360) 427-9670, extension 869.
Great, thank you. All right, that brings us to item number five. Let me see if I can speak her right. This is the time we set aside for citizen input to address the Commission. Anybody that would like to address the Commission, please state your name, where you're from, and go to the podium and speak.
Items that are not on the agenda.
Items that are not on the agenda, yes.
Not on the agenda?
Yeah, if it's on the agenda, if you want to talk about the hearing or something else.
Well, I want to talk about your... There was an article in... Oh, first of all, my name is Al Nederreiter. I'm with the Shurecrest Beach Club. And Joe is with me also. And we're here to talk about your animal control thing that was in the Journal. Approximately, according to what I read, it said it costs about $175,000 to maintain or start up a animal control again in the Mason County area. And in that one proposal, I think it also said something about you have to pay $60,000 to the police department, the sheriff, to do the animal control that you're doing now. We live in an HOA, and at the time when I read that article, I thought there was only a couple of us HOAs. But I found out later that there's 18 of us. And we used to have board meetings at the Shurecrest Beach Club. And I think one or two of you guys have attended those meetings. It's my proposal that we, as HOAs, contribute something towards your budget so that we could get animal control again. But it's been so late in the season and so late since I read that article that we don't have enough time to contact all the HOAs and make that proposal. So I just wanted to let you know that we are interested and we would like to help your budget so that we could get that animal control back because we need it in most of our HOAs. Not only for the helping out with the dog control, but also for animals that are hit or whatever that need to be picked up and stuff like that. I have a beach club card. Do you guys want it?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I'll give that to you. Now, being this so late, I found out from our secretary that we need to contact all the HOAs, first of all. Set up a meeting with one of you guys and the sheriff and talk about this again and see who... How many of the HOAs are willing to participate to help your budget so that we can have this thing established? And I talked with... I was just recently voted in as the VP of our HOA, so this is why I'm here.
And if you'd like, you can give your card, your business card, to Travis.
To him?
And then he'll share it with the rest of us.
And just so they know, we're interested in helping you get that done. And I guess that's about all I got to say.
All right, that'll be great.
Oh, one more thing. God bless you all.
Thank you, God bless you too.
Madam Chair, 13 years, that's the first time I've ever heard Joey come in and say that. That they want to help us with our budget. 13 years, I've never heard that once.
Well, I've only been in the beach club for about three years now, two or three years, and they just recently voted me in for the VP. And when I saw that article, I thought, well, what a perfect opportunity. Because every board meeting I've been to, the main subject is animal control, where a few of our residents have... They don't think it's their responsibility to take care of their dogs properly. So they let them run the streets and bite other dogs or bite people and all that stuff. And every board meeting is always that complaint. How do we control this? Our hands are tied. The only thing we have to do is call the sheriff. And apparently, the sheriff came out one time and went to a particular house. The people had their dogs inside the house and would not answer the door for the sheriff. So his hands are tied. So here we are. We got this situation. Now, if we have an animal control in Mason County, that's a little bit different story. The animal control person has the right to, you know, supply warrants or do whatever and capture the animals and take them away and do whatever, you know? So that's a big difference there between the sheriff and the Humane Society.
Right, right. Well, it's a continuing conversation, so we appreciate you coming in and letting us know about the HOAs. That's awesome.
Yeah, if I can get the rest of the HOAs, that's why I want to set up... That's why I said it'll be next year, because I want to set up that meeting with all 18. And everybody... Not everybody would be able to contribute the same amount. You know, I don't want to put a blanket amount on it. Like, we were thinking we could probably contribute 5,000 towards your budget.
All right, well, we'll have Travis reach out to you and we'll schedule something soon-ish.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Al.
My bet. Do you want to stay or do I leave? Did I say that too loud?
I heard you.
Thank you, commissioners, for opportunity to speak. My name is Donna Duke, and I work with the Youth Connection in a supportive role to our Executive Director Susan, as well as with Human Resources. Is honored to share a brief update on the important work we're doing across Mason County. In September, our Shelton Center served 527 young people, and our Belfair Center welcomed 15, including several new faces. While those numbers dipped slightly as schools started, our centers remain busy every single day. Through the dedication of our care team, we helped four young people move into permanent housing and prevented additional households from becoming homeless. Each of those represents a young person who now has a hope and a stable place to build their future. Our young people rely on us for breakfast and a hot lunch, often the only meals they'll have that day. We also keep our six off-site housing programs stocked with food to ensure no young person in our care goes hungry. Right now, our food supplies are extremely low, and with the demand for take-home food bags and meals continuing to rise, our shelves are struggling to keep up. To help meet that need, the Youth Connection has partnered with several local coffee stands, banks, and Teas Cafe to collect donations through the holidays. We're also gearing up for this holiday season. Our team will be serving a community Thanksgiving meal for youth and their families and organizing our annual Christmas giving tree, which provides holiday gifts to more than 75 young people each year. For many of them, it's the only gift they'll receive and reminds them that their community truly cares. I wanted to do a quick update on our transitional housing project. This week, the Youth Connection is submitting our application, which represents the final funding needed for our transitional housing project. This project will create 12 units of safe, supportive housing for youth who currently have nowhere to go. If awarded, we will be fully funded and really ready to begin construction in the early 2028... 26, excuse me. It has been a long journey, but we are incredibly close to making this vision a reality, and your partnership has been instrumental in getting us here. The Youth Connection remains fully committed to preventing and ending youth homelessness in Mason County. With your continued support, we can ensure every young person, no matter their circumstances, has the opportunity to grow, thrive, and contribute to our community. Thank you again for your time and standing for us with its part in work.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you for being on that board. All right, do we have anyone else in the room that would like to address the Commission?
Good morning. Tom Dennis, I'm your volunteer radio officer for emergency management. No, I'm not here to complain about sensory link like we did earlier. This year, we took care of that with Starlink. I want to talk about the volunteer driver program, or lack of. Just a little history, since I came up here in 1990 with sheriff's office out of Thurston County. Mason County's had volunteers helping emergency management and sheriff's office drive vehicles. I've been with the group here eight years, and we've gone through the two old rigs and got the new one up recently and getting it ready to deploy. And I've done the search at Hama Hama. About five weeks ago, Tammy was talking to risk management, Nikki there, about getting our new folks certified. And she says, oh, we can't have volunteers driving county vehicles. So this is not a bad Monty Python sketch about civil service, but Tammy referred it to John, and it's been five weeks and we haven't heard anything. And just like have the commissioners maybe whatever they can do to look into this. I feel this is just a little civil service bump, because every county around us has volunteers driving and, you know, somebody looking at a book and not realizing they're needed. And I think five weeks is pretty long to be waiting for a simple policy issue, you know, because emergency management can't operate those vehicles. They've got them, have a crew, and they depend on us. And of course, the sheriff's office has a big crew of volunteers. And help you can help us, you know, help us out. I think that way they're scoring to work on it, finding the lower leak underneath. That's about it, folks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and we'll look into it. Thanks.
Can you go? You can go now.
You are just...
Thank you all, God bless you all.
Thank you, God bless you too. All right, anyone else in the room?
You're going to be contacting me?
Nope. Okay, anyone in the Zoom room would like to address the Commission? Not seeing anyone. Let's move on to item number six.
Madam Chair, if there's no objection, I would like to add an item 8.13 that would advertise a set of public hearing for the sale of lots 3 and 4 on Public Works Drive to set the hearing up for 11:04 of 2025 at 9:00 a.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right. I have a motion and a second with the addition of item 8.13. Any further discussion? We'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, a move we approve the minutes for September 30th, 2025, regular minutes, and August 2026, 2024. I think that should be 25.
It's 24.
It's old, okay. September 29th, 2025, and October 6th, 2025, briefing minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve September 30th, 2025, regular minutes, and August 26th, 2024, September 29th, 2025, and October 6th, 2025, briefing minutes. Any discussion? Just real quick, I want to thank Tammy for going back in time and figuring, getting us up to date. So with that, I'll call for the vote.
Madam Chair, I've got a question on that first. So we went back to 2024. Is that a revision or what are we doing?
No, that was never approved.
Wow, okay. Great job.
Yes, thank you, Tammy. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number eight, approval of our action agenda. Commissioners, we'll read through the action agenda. Items can then be removed for a separate discussion or a vote. Commissioner Netherlands, if you could take 8.1 through 8.3. Commissioner Tarzwell, 8.4 through 8.8. And then I will take the remainder.
Madam Chair, item number 8.1 reads: Approval of warrants and treasures, electronic remittance, claims, clearing funds, warrants number 811-5829 through 811-6297. The amount: $1,843,287.24. Direct deposit fund, warrants number 1201-77 through 1205-86. The amount: $981,113.40. Salary clearing fund, warrants number 7009201 through 7009237. The amount: $1,257,720.95. Item number 8.2, approval to reappoint Arthur Whitson to the Clean Water District Advisory Committee, the CWDAC, for an additional three-year term. Item number 8.3, approval of the Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion, LEAD, subcontract with Olympic Health and Recovery Services in the amount of $832,408 from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2027.
Item 8.4, approval of a resolution amending Resolution Number 2024-056, Veterans Advisory Board slash Veterans Assistant. Item number 8.5, approval of the purchase of QuickBooks, of a QuickBooks subscription for the Veterans Assistance Fund. Item 8.6, approval to sign the State Homeland Security Program, SHP, fiscal year 24, grant contract number E25-209, amendment from the Washington State Military Department and U.S. Department of Homeland Security reflecting equipment and sub-project updates with no change to the total contract amount. Item 8.7, approval of the county administrator to sign for 14 2026 Enterprise Vehicle Lease Replacements. Item 8.8, approval for facilities to purchase a surplus 2002 Ford F-550 flatbed truck with sander and plow attachments from Public Works for $1,000.
Item 8.9, approval of the request for proposals for the operation of a cold-weather night-by-night emergencies shelter for a period of approximately December 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2025. 8.10, approval of relocation assistance of 5,000 for the water and wastewater management position salary negotiation. Item 8.11, approval to sign the letter of support for Mason County PUD Number One's Gridline Resiliency Project, Beacon Point. Item 812, approval to sign the letter of support for Mason County PUD Number One's Grid Resilience Project, Georgestadt Substation Phase 2. And item 8.13, approval to set a public hearing on July 4th, 2025, for lots 3 and 4 on Public Works Drive.
November 4th.
November 4th. Did I say November 4th?
I heard July.
Well, I'm ready for next year. All right. Commissioners, any items you would like to have removed for special discussion or vote?
No.
No? Anyone in the audience like anything removed for special discussion or vote? Anyone in the Zoom room like anything removed for special discussion or vote? All right. Hearing none.
Madam Chair, a move for approval of the action agenda in its entirety, items number 8.1 through 8.13, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items 8.1 through 8.13. Any comments?
Yes. Madam Chair, I want to thank Art for stepping up again. Those citizen committees are very, very important to us, and this advisory committee is also very important and has done great work. Thank you for stepping up again. A special thank you to our facility staff and our Public Works. People don't realize that the two are very separate. The budgets are completely different. Anything that's on this side from Public Works doesn't come over to here. There's a little thing that's allowed for the Sheriff's Department for patrol and stuff, but that's it. But they work together in order to save this county a lot of money and to provide for a truck that will have a sander and a plow to be able to do other things. Thank you to both sides for working that out, working together, and giving our ability to service our community a little better.
All right. I am going to go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you all. Now, let's move on to item number nine, other business. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to say anything?
Kelly Rowan from DCD. So it's very possible that at any minute, there's going to be five high school students that are going to be shadowing the DCD department starting today. And so they're with Human Resources, but they've been told to come here for the public hearing that's going to come up, and then we'll take them back. So just in case.
When you do...
There's a slight interruption.
When you do, the chair has the authority and ability to stop the meeting and introduce them all.
We can do that.
So be prepared. Because it will happen.
Called that one, didn't I?
Kelly, do you have anything that you'd like to talk to us about? Lights and stuff, pretty things around here and recognizing what happens?
He doesn't just present pretty, though. He does a lot more than that.
The Press Catcher Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Day, so we kind of turned the county purpleish and pink in the next door and this building and the courthouse. So thanks for allowing us to do that. Thanks for my staff. They went out there and worked hard to get that all done. So, and it will be going green in November for the Veterans Assistance.
Madam Chair, I'm sure you noticed he's giddy when he does it. When he comes to, when he gets, leaves our room, he's pretty excited about it. He loves, this is very important to him and the community. He does love it.
Yeah. And you and your team, they're amazing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I will pass it on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Anyone else? All right. Do we have any directors or electeds in the Zoom room that would like to address the Commission? Okey-dokey. Let's move on to our public hearings. We have two. Let's begin with the public hearing to consider surplus of real property at 141 Hemlock Elma, Washington. Tax parcel number 61930-51-00075, and ask staff to present.
Get my glasses out here. So we're asking for the surplus and sale of real property at 141 West Hemlock Elma, Washington, parcel number 61930-51-00075. The B OCC held a public hearing on Tuesday, October 14th, to consider the surplus and sale parcel number, the one I just said. This parcel is owned by Mason County, has been deemed to be considered surplus ownership. Parcel will be listed with the county's authorized broker for sale. And we are asking the note... And we are asking the note, oh, I should also notice that the notes of hearing was published two times. It was in the paper on nine twenty-five and on ten two in the Sheldon Mason County Journal. And we're requesting the approval of the resolution declaring parcel number six one nine three zero dash five one dash zero 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 seven five a surplus property.
All right. Any questions for staff? Thank you.
You got you.
All right, now we set this time aside for public testimony or comments. Have anyone in the audience that would like to provide public testimony? Anybody like to comment? No? Anyone in the Zoom room like to comment or testify on this? All right, hearing none. Commissioners deliberation or possible motion?
Yeah, it seems appropriate. It's a surplus property. Let's. I move that we move forward with this action.
I'll second.
All right, we are moving forward with surplusing real property at one forty-one Hemlock Elma, Washington, tax parcel number six one nine three zero dash five one dash zero 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 seven five. Any comments? Discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's move on to item ten point two, public hearing to take public testimony for the amendments to Mason County Code, Chapter five eighteen, temporary outdoor public events, also known as TOEPC, and to deliberate and vote on the TOEPC amendments. Turn it over to staff for presentation.
Kel Rowan with Mason County Community Development Department and.
Ian Tracy, Department of Health.
So this is a continuation of a public hearing in order to consider amendments to Title five point one eight, temporary outdoor public events, which would allow smaller events to be held on rural residential properties throughout the county. And we've worked with the commission on several occasions and made some final edits at a briefing two Mondays ago. And so.
Twenty ninth.
On the twenty ninth of September.
Any questions for staff? No? Anyone in the audience have questions for staff? Anyone in the Zoom room have questions for staff? Man. Getting off easy. All right. Thank you, guys.
Yep, sure.
It's the time to set aside for public comment and/or testimony. Anyone in the room like to testify or comment? Josh? Anyone in the Zoom room like to testify or comment? All righty. Well? Let's move on to Commissioner deliberation or possible motion.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I will move that we pass the amended code Title five, Chapter five point one eight, temporary outdoor public events as presented with the addition, something they have listed down here, a staff recommendation that the permit would last two years. And that I would have comment if it's seconded.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to to amend Mason County Code, Chapter five eight, five point one eight, temporary outdoor public events, and to extend it or have the permit last for two years. All right, any discussion?
Just want everybody to know, we went over this and over and over and over. There'll be people that are not happy with it, but the way we went about this from the commission's standpoint is we also were doing our very best to protect the rights of every individual for their political rights, their personal rights, being able to use their property. I myself and the commission agreed because we're pushing this forward is that we separated out a difference between commercial and personal use. And although I have received phone calls, and I'm sure I'm going to receive some more, please understand that when you're doing a commercial venture in a neighborhood or something else, there's a lot of other neighbors that are affected by that. There's risks that happen. The larger the operation, the greater the risk. The risk is not just to the neighbor, but quite often to the people that are attending it. And it is our responsibility sometimes to make sure that there are safety factors put into place to make sure that everybody goes home safe. We have a situation where, you know, they're going to be looked at for fire safety, evacuation routes, potable water, and also the idea that if you're going to have food trucks and other venues of serving food out there to a large amount of people, that it's safely done. And I'm supportive of this because I made the motion, so I'm obviously supportive of it. It's because I do see a difference between the two and I do think it is our job to, folks come, to protect our citizens on all aspects. And for those that are angry, I appreciate that. But we do the best we can with what we have to protect everybody in the best way we can.
All right.
I just want to thank staff for the time and effort, for Kel and Ian putting up with us because we were, we kept leaning on them to try and make sure that we were protecting everyone's rights while protecting health and safety. So thank you very much for your time and effort and for putting up with me, anyway. I was, I can apologize for myself, but.
I'll throw an apology for me too while you're at it.
All right, great. I'm not going to comment other than saying we have probably the most amazing staff. I can honestly say that we have incredible staff and I appreciate you guys so much. Your patience, your understanding, your desire to make, to help Mason County move forward in a very positive way. So I want to thank you all for that. And before we move forward and before I call in the vote, we have some amazing people that just walked in the room. And I am so excited to see you guys here. This is, this has been one of my dreams and now it's finally, it's cool to see you guys here. Kel or Josh? Or, oh, yes, Kim, sorry. We're trying not to embarrass you guys because we don't want you to run out the door.
Kim Monroe, HR Director for Mason County. First of all, I want to thank the commission for the support with this program and Sharon, specifically your, bringing your passion to life. We've been working with the Shelton High School to, in their CTE program, to bring on students who are interested in finding out how government works and potentially building careers in, with the governor of Mason County. So if we do have time, I would like for each one of you to be able to address the podium and introduce yourself and talk about what you'll be doing, just what departments you're going to be working with this cycle.
Right up here to the podium.
So my name's Ryan Kaiser. I am here and I'm very excited to finally get to work and see how everything works. And my main focus is to see how I could work and build upon what's there and see what I could do to improve everything in the community.
Very cool. Thank you, Ryan.
Hi, I'm Alex German. I'm going to be working with Ryan cover and helping build Shelton, make it better and make it look better.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Emily Lewis. I'll be working with those two all as well and and hopefully making Mason County better.
Thank you.
Wait, is it my turn?
Yeah.
It's your turn.
My name's Ashley Lewis. Yeah, she's my sister, if you guys don't know. I feel like this was a great opportunity to learn new things and so that's why I'm doing this. And I hope I can like learn things that I can take on to my career in the future.
Well done. Thank you.
My name is Chelsea Hannah and I get the opportunity to work with my friends. And I really hope I get a chance to absolutely help re, like build Shelton from the ground up again.
Fantastic.
I got more out there.
Anybody else in the room?
They went upstairs to the auditors.
So again, thank you guys for being here. Our students will be with us for the next few weeks. And then hopefully we can convince them to come back to the board meeting after their sessions are done with us to kind of give us an insight about what you learned, what you appreciated before you see yourself in the future of Mason County. I also want to take the moment to thank Kayla, my assistant. She has been instrumental at the heavy lifting on coordinating, getting schedules set up, working with the departments to figure out what kind of functions and assignments the students are going to have while they're here. So thank you.
Thank you.
So excited you guys are here and can't wait to hear what you say in a couple of weeks. Hopefully it's all good. All right, commissioners. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, boards, calendars, and reports. Commissioner Tarzwell first, Commissioner Netherlands, and then I will follow.
I didn't even know where we are. What's the date today? Today's fourteenth.
It is.
Okay, well.
Bye, thank you, guys.
Bye, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
I have a fire district meeting tomorrow. Should get back to. You know, you'd think I'd be prepared for this because I knew it was coming, but I'm not.
That happens.
Uh, yeah. We have sheriff's breakfast on Thursday at Spencer Lake. I have an appointment with another doctor on Thursday. Dr. Green, what is this? Okay, doesn't matter. Yeah, it's a little early. I have, I'm really getting anxious. I have kidney stone surgery on the eleventh, so this, I think that must be the second. Eleventh would be a Saturday. Anyway. What is the, boy, I've got too many. We have an executive committee meeting for the EDC, also Thursday at ten thirty. I'm off by a week. That's what, that's what's going on.
Darn it.
Yeah, forgive me. Thursday, we have Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization meeting at one Friday. It's not a meeting I'm going to, so I'm going to skip that one. Next Monday, we have our briefing in the morning, the WASAC virtual conference, and then there's a PAC committee meeting at one PM. One o'clock, huh? That's an interesting time.
It's a special PAC between us and the.
Yeah, it's a joint.
That's right. Then Tuesday, we have a fire district six meeting, a MTA board meeting, and then MaceCom at three. And then I will be leaving, going out of town the rest of that week. I also wanted to comment, both Sharon and I were at the Realtors' meeting. Was that, what day was that last week?
Friday.
Friday.
No, Thursday, sorry.
Thursday, there was a meeting of the Realtors from Mason County in Thurston and kind of a state of the real estate market these days. It was quite interesting, although Sharon and I did not discuss any business, any county business.
But we did notice that meeting anyway. Yes, I, because I was thinking I was going to be there. I noticed it for the public. Septic, I met with some folks who have issues trying everything they can to get a septic system on the properties. I want to say thank you to our staff for working with me, showing me some of the stuff that turned out to be accurate. One thing's about being in our job, we love to represent our community. We try our best to represent our community, but it isn't, it's fairly common that the stories might be a little different than the way things turn out sometimes. That's why we go to staff and we ask them. So I want to thank staff for getting me all the information, right information. And I did get ahold of them. They would like to take you up on the idea of coming out and looking and maybe looking for some other options. And I appreciate you stepped up to do that. Law enforcement firefighters, Pioneer Quanta sent me a guest speaker, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority. I'm going to be sending out a video here of a meeting that we had. They're looking to take control of getting some type of different permitting, free or maybe five dollars for burning and the like. The reason why is that we can keep track of where they are. Mason County is different with it. The ones that do are our own through our fire inspectors, but the idea might be something we might be interested in just in order to know where things are as the fire season seem to be increasing around here. Coming up, North Mason Chamber Congress meeting, Hood Canal Coordinating Council meeting, the Rotary Political Regional Transportation Organization meeting. I think we have a Reagan dinner, League of Women Voters, Mason Transit Authority. I also may be at the sheriff's breakfast, rest pool for a few days. I may also be online quietly on the WASAC. And I will be for the joint meeting of the PAC and the commission. And then back and we do it again.
All right. So commissioners, don't forget that we have the employee service awards.
And we have the employee service award.
Right after this. So don't go far. And then let's see, tomorrow's courthouse security meeting, lodging tax. I'll be the women's group debate timer. And that'll be at the Mason PUD at six o'clock, so don't forget that. That's for the, I think there's a lot of city council members that'll be there and I'm not sure who else. But that'll be fun. Thursday is the Mason County Childcare Coalition meeting, Public Works Board Executive meeting, NACO meeting, Public Works Board Executive, or Public Works Board Broadband meeting. Holy cow. We have our budget briefing, also budget briefing on Monday, virtual assembly, special PAC meeting with us, Mason Transit, SWAC meeting, Turning Point Board meeting, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting. And then Friday is Turning Points in Power. That's their big fundraiser. It'll be at Alderbrook. And I'm so looking forward to that one because it's amazing organization and I, as you all know, I have a special spot in my heart for them. Also would like to wish Commissioner Netherlands a happy birthday tomorrow.
I forgot.
Yeah. That's what happens when you get old.
Yeah.
And hopefully that's it. Anything else, commissioners? All right, motion?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, we are adjourned. See you guys in just a few minutes. Here.